We will call the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five Faribault City Council Meeting to order. First item is roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Dambouya?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Rowan?
Here.
Vanslouze?
Here.
Teal?
Here.
Mayor Spooner?
Here.
And Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of agenda.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Dambouya, second by Teal. Any objections? Hang on.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have two presentations and proclamations. Arbor Day proclamation and Pollinator Month proclamation. Which one would you like first? Office of the Mayor, the City of Faribault. As Arbor Day provides Minnesota with the opportunity to celebrate the importance of trees, forests, and our community, culture, history, future state, future of the state. Whereas, trees are of great value as they provide clean air, water, shade, and energy savings, wildlife habitat, recreational opportunities, wood products, and jobs while capturing and storing carbon from the atmosphere, thereby offsetting greenhouse gases. Whereas, properly planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees makes a community forest more resilient by minimizing the impacts of disease, insects, and other stressors as the climate change and providing long-term community and environmental benefits. Whereas, the state of Minnesota is at risk of losing one million asteries due to emerald ashore, potentially increasing CO2 emissions and flooding. Whereas, thoughtfully choosing planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees now resiliens communities into the future. Whereas, our local community is beautiful, and in order to stay that way, it needs local assistance. Whereas, we encourage everyone to clean up their yards and nearby public spaces when possible. Therefore, I, Tom Spooner, Mayor of the City of Faribault, do proclaim Saturday, May third, two thousand and twenty-five, Arbor Day and Beautification Day, the city of Faribault.
Everybody, a happy Earth Day today. Isn't it nice that the proclamation happens on Earth Day? And this will be our sixteenth year, Pauline tells me, of planting trees. And sometimes it's just the three of us there doing it, but it is going to happen on the third again. And I guess I'm not sure what kind of trees we'll be planting, but it will be at North Alexander. And I'm Pat Rice, and I thank you.
We invite everyone to come to Arbor Day on Saturday, May third, in the North Alexander Park. And it's in North Alexander Park where the city is taking care of our forests and our people. And we also had a windstorm last summer, which is why we invited everyone to come to the plastic ceremony. Grove Garden Club will fund the two trees we planted on that day. But we also encourage residents to plant a new tree this fall, when you plant them fall, but this spring. And when you plant a tree, you're planting for the future, because you may not see the tree to maturity, but the next spring.
Thanks, Pauline and Pat. As they mentioned, Arbor Day is going to be celebrated on May third here in Faribault. We started our Arbor Day celebration back in two thousand and nine. After request of residents, they were driving around wondering why we didn't have Trees of the USA signs in our community. So that's when we started in Faribault in two thousand and nine, celebrating Arbor Day celebration. We encourage everybody to get out, plant trees, and enjoy them.
Once again, from the Office of the Mayor, whereas pollinator species such as birds, bees, bugs, and other insects are a special partner in foreplanting and producing much of the food. Whereas, pollination plays a vital role in the health of our trees, plants, our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. Whereas, the city of Faribault has managed our urban landscape and fallen land, many municipal parks and greenways, as well as a wildlife habitat. Whereas, in two thousand and seventeen, Faribault passed a pollinator-friendly city resolution which led to the city's recognition in two thousand and nineteen by the Pollinator Friendly Alliance of Minnesota. And whereas, the city has partnered with grows, gardeners reaching out of service, a local gardening group, providing educational opportunities and encouraging citizens to plant pollinator-friendly species. I now therefore, Tom Spooner, Mayor of the City of Faribault, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as the Pollinator Month.
I want to thank my hearing, um, thank the city for working with us and supporting us and supporting pollinators and support us. Because we are well for a healthy system, and that's what we do, but because they really um, to the health of our environment, we need them. And um, a third of our food we eat is due to our pollinators, and we're losing them so much. Of course, we might be losing some of our own food. And they also support obviously other animals and birds and healthy soil and water ultimately. And it's just, it's a small thing. The insects and some things are annoying, but they support us. And just the microorganisms underneath the soil and the little stuff that everything else is, those are the pollinators. And just to be clear, that we're talking about our native pollinators and not honeybees. They're like honey, they're not native here. And they're completely non-protected, like that. And they're being fined as long as they're, they have good keepers. The best support for native pollinators are native plants, native people here. And um, because they've evolved with that and they support and um, so they've evolved with them, starting in the spring with flowering native trees and ephemerals. And dandelions are not native, so we don't really promote normally either. Because it started in England where honeybees and dandelions are native. So we would like to see people planting more native trees here. So, does that sound okay?
Um, we've been working with the Pollinator Group, as we mentioned, since two thousand and sixteen during our Pollinator uh, Proclamation back in two thousand and seventeen. Since then, we've been working hard with our parks to continue to grow our pollinator areas throughout the parks.
On to approval of amendments of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
No moved.
Second.
Motion by Rowan, second by Vanslouze. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Asked to be heard, we had none. Five consent agenda items, is there anything?
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from voting on six T and six U. I will be voting in favor of the rest.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item six A through six U.
Second.
Aye Ross, second by Teal. All those in favor of six A through six U? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. No public hearings tonight. Eight, eight. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-two, awarding the sale of general obligation water revenue bonds, series two thousand and twenty-five A, in the original aggregate principal amount of six million, nine hundred and eighty thousand. Fix their form and specifications directing their execution and delivery and providing their payment.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk too long about this, but to say that in the packet that went out, the resolution was blank, but in front of you today, you do have the resolution that has been completed after the bond sale, as well as a bond summary that is here before you tonight. And then I'm going to ask Tammy Omdahl from Northland Securities to talk about the bond sale that happened today.
Mayor and City Councilmembers Tammy Omdahl with Northland Public Finance, serving as advisor to the city. And yes, the resolution was blank in the packet because bids were not taken until this morning. Before I cover the results, I want to note these bonds are being issued to finance water utility improvements. As part of the process, the city applied for an enhanced rating from the Public Utilities Authority, and that application was approved, and that means these bonds were sold with an enhanced rating of triple A. As part of the process, the city went through a review with S and P for the city's underlying rating, and that rating of double A was affirmed. And as part of that report that S and P published, they did note the strength of the city's financial management, so great news for the city on the application of that. With respect to the bids this morning, there were two bids received, and the low bid was from RW shares. As you and many are paying attention to, there has been a lot of volatility in the market. The city did with those two bids, and from RW shares, did receive great results with a final low bid of three point nine nine. That compares to the finance plan, so from a few years ago, when my colleague George Eilishen was presenting on that, the estimate at that time, I believe, four point one seven percent. So from a planning perspective and use of revenue, great results with the city with that. With that said, there is a resolution for you. That resolution will declare the bond to RW shares with a final par amount of six million, nine hundred and thirty-five.
I'll look forward to them.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-one-two.
Second.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-one-two, Ross seconded by Barnes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion pass. We are on to resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-one-eight, approval of an on-sale intoxicating Sunday liquor license for Los Regos Supermarketo. Ada?
Taquaria.
Didn't want to offend anybody. Um, Heather, selecta, city clerk.
Mayor's member of the council, Los Regos Supermercado y Taquaria, has submitted an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday liquor license. They'll be operating at twenty-four Fourth Street Northwest. They, in their application, they stated that they'll abide by state statutes and city ordinances regarding all requirements in the hour of sale of alcoholic beverages. The police department completed a background check, and our city attorney has reviewed the liquor liability and general liability insurance with no concerns. If approved, their license will be in effect from April twenty-third, or once it's approved by the state of Minnesota, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. That, I will answer any questions.
You.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-one-eight.
Second.
Motion by Vanslouze, seconded by Ross, to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-one-eight.
Aye.
All opposed. On to bids. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-oh-five, accepting the bid for miscellaneous concrete projects contract twenty-five dash zero-one, Director Mark Duchesne.
Thank you, Mayor Spooner, members of the council and the public. Before you tonight is four bids that were opened last Wednesday, April sixteenth. The first bid being for our two thousand and twenty-five miscellaneous concrete contract. This is an annual contract that we do with various concrete-related items that come out throughout the year, and then as they're needed, we use them. This is for replacing curb and sidewalk due to water main breaks or other things that pop up. Other utility department, our utility department, our parks department sometimes have miscellaneous concrete work that needs to be done. Time and getting quotes. This year's low bid came from Healy Construction, just over eighty-nine thousand dollars. For reference, in the last three or four years, we've spent closer to like thirty, forty thousand. A kind of an aggregate of all the items we've used over the years in the bid package, so we have something to compare. With that, we are recommending approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-five one-zero-five, accepting the bids from Healy Construction.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just for our viewing public, can you remind us why there's a price difference between, oh, page one and page two? It's eighty-seven, five, twelve on one, and then eighty-nine, two, sixty-two on the other. Some engineering estimate fees or something?
Typo in the...
The three amounts included in the resolution are the true amounts.
Yes.
And the three in just the summary, the background are incorrect. No further questions, Mayor, thank you.
I'm out, entertain a motion.
No moved.
Second.
Motion by Rowan, second by Dambouya. All those in favor, we're on to two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item B, resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-oh-six, accepting bids for the two thousand and twenty-five street overlay and sidewalk improvements contract, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two, once again, Mr. Mark Duchesne.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is the second bids that were opened last Wednesday for our street overlay and sidewalk improvements. List of streets and the diagram of them is shown on the screen here. For this bid, we did receive two bids, the low bid being from Batumus Materials Incorporated LLC out of Faribault, Minnesota, at just under seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. You can see it's about thirteen percent underneath. Both bids were favorable bids that we received here. When we factored in engineering and other fees, the total project costs are just under eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and you can see those are split amongst our various street improvement and utility funds. Majority of this project is funded through our street improvement fund, which is funded through the city. Project scheduled, pending award of contract tonight, we anticipate construction will start late May, early June, and be wrapped up by the end of August. Pending any questions, we are recommending approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-five one-zero-six.
Any questions for Director Duchesne? Hang on, I would recommend, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-zero-six.
Second.
I have a motion by Ross, second by Vanslouze. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. On to resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-oh-seven, accepting bids for the two thousand and twenty-five MSA Street Overlay and Sidewalk Improvements Contract, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-three, once again, Director Duchesne.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The third bid tonight is for our two thousand and twenty-five Municipal State Aid or MSA Street Overlay and Utility Improvements Contract. This is primarily for the overlay of Hewlett Avenue from Seventh Street Northwest to Twentieth Street or Trunk Highway three northwest. Also included in this project was some water main, water main along these, where there we have segments that were missing water main. Bid results, we received three bids on this project, the low bid coming from Crane Creek Asphalt out of Faribault, just on, just over five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. You can see well underneath the engineer's estimate. I should note that the, what's presented to you here is for both the base bid and the alternate bid. We did have an alternate bid for an additional water main segment, and staff is recommending that we award the alternate segment that we're replacing. We couldn't do it for less than what this bid comes in, so now we repave Hewlett Avenue. So, again, well underneath the engineer's estimate. With the ultimate, total project costs in are just under six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Most of that is coming out of our municipal state aid fund, which is funds that we receive from the state for our municipal state aid system. And then the water main work is funded through this water utility fund, and then we have a little bit of sanitary. Total project cost, when you factor in engineering fees and contingencies, is just under six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Similar project schedule to the previous one, pending award tonight. We anticipate construction will start in late May, early June, and again, completion by August. With that, again, I'll stand for any questions, but we are recommending approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-five one-zero-seven.
Any questions for Director Duchesne?
Mayor Spooner? Mayor Spooner, I make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-oh-seven.
Second.
Motion by Vanslouze, second by Dambouya, to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-seven. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. And our last item, resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash one-oh-eight, accepting bids for the two thousand and twenty-five Third Avenue Southwest Reconstruction Improvements Contract, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-one, and once again, Director Duchesne.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The last bid tonight is for the Third Avenue Southwest Reconstruction. This is full street and utility reconstruction of Third Avenue Southwest from Division Street down to Third Street Southwest. We received five bids for this project, the low bid coming from BCM Construction Incorporated out of Faribault, Minnesota, just under one million, twenty-five thousand dollars. You can see about eleven percent under the engineer's estimate. And we received two bids underneath estimate, and then two bids just above estimate, and one a little bit higher. Shows you the competitive bidding market that's out there right now, and again, we did receive a few. Once we factor in again, engineering and contingency fees, we're looking at a total project cost of just under one point two four million dollars. Those costs are spread amongst, again, our street improvement fund and our various utility Very similar schedule to what we talked about in the previous two projects, pending approval of bids tonight. We anticipate constructional, and this one will start probably in early June, by the time we get structures ordered in here, and then final completion by August thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. This is adjacent to Bethel Academy School, and we have coordinates to school, or five acres of school. Well, there's some special events, and realizing that by the time school starts at the end of August, because they are starting before, maybe they're gonna be, uh, six weeks, six weeks, six weeks, six weeks. With that, I certainly will stand for any questions, but we recommend approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-five one-zero-eight.
Any questions for Director Duchesne? Hang on, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Ross seconded by Teal. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Lords Commission reports announcements, project updates. Anybody got anything today?
Yep, so the Paradise Center for the Arts, Mick Sterling is playing on Friday, April twenty-fifth. May is actually a membership month for the Paradise Theater of the Arts, so they're taking off ten dollars for membership fees to get the membership numbers up. And Riverbed Nature Center has their fun run on May third, technically at seven-thirty, and they anticipate up to three hundred runs. And I'll hear about people who have got their stories.
Uh, Earth Day was great. I've been going since about quarter to four, walking across the farm field today, is what I wanted to do. They had their official land dedication between the Heinz Farm and Riverbed Nature Center and the Trust for Public Land. I was, uh, I was impressed about the number of people that were out there. Pretty impressive, but Riverbed Nature Center, once again, adding land. They added just over, I believe it's forty-five acres, yep, and we're, I think we're now six acres short of eight hundred acres for Riverbed Nature Center in control. Yet. They have first rate of refusal on the, on the farmstead. I still think we'll be about two acres short, so Chief Deans is still the chairman, we're gonna have to get you to buy some more property out there. Hundred acre goal. Other than that, Jessica Kinzer, I think you were raising your hand.
Yes, um, so just as a reminder, uh, next Tuesday is technically the fifth Tuesday, but we are having a retreat, and I have good news for you. Alison Burnett and I had been talking about not doing the SWOT analysis at this, because it's, uh, it tends to be, she wanted to be at the beginning, it tends to be something where we need to have some critical conversations that aren't necessarily bounded by, we need to get on to the next thing, and so she's gonna hold that for May, when she will be here again, and we'll have a meeting, more to talk about on that one. So the first two hours, from one to three, is going to be Alison doing some leadership training with management staff related to feedback and customer service. And so, while you are all welcome to be there, and we'll certainly post the meeting starting at one, in case there's a quorum, I wasn't sure that that was a topic that all of you would find the same level of interest in. So, um, so you are excused from one to three unless you want to be there, but if we can have you there by three fifteen on the twenty-ninth, that's when Dave and, Dave Wanberg and Harry Davis will start a presentation on planning and zoning and land use and everything you need to know in two hours about that topic. And then Scott Riggs will be providing some dinnertime entertainment related to, related to contracting and purchasing requirements. And then we're going to, in the evening, talking about that Viaduct Park survey related to Phase Two and ICE and everything, and so Brad sent out another email, there's three people who haven't responded, and so we're really looking for more responses there. So we'd love to see seven responses to be able to talk about how everybody kind of feels related to preferences. So that's, um, that's kind of the big news, so please be there at one if you want to be part of the, the training that we're going to do, but if you need some extra time in your day, three fifteen is really when we'll, we'll start with planning and zoning.
All right, I'll make a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Ross, second by Dambouya. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.